Uh, everyone rise, pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, to the republic which stands by nation under God, in the physical, political, and the express service of our all. Alright, welcome back everyone. We're missing Lou, that's unfortunate. I don't have any recognition or comments, so we'll move right on to item 4.0. Approve and amend the minutes, we have two sets. The first from the 27th of June. Is there a motion regarding these minutes?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Alan.
Second.
Second by Bill. Any further discussion? Comments, changes? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, approved. On to the minutes from August 2nd. This was the special meeting in the superintendent's office. Is there a motion regarding these minutes? Move to approve by Bill. Second by Steve. Any further discussion on these? Um, all those in favor of the motion to approve? Okay, that passes. We have one upstaged. Item 5.0, adjustments to the agenda. I know that we have added an executive session. This is regarding real estate matter, correct? We'll add that to 12.5. Anything else?
Just have one personnel matter, one nomination for you that we just received yesterday. So you have a hard copy with you at your table tonight. And the only other thing is just a small thing under 10.3. We had two of the flow trips there for your approval, and there's a third one that just didn't get added. So hopefully you have that as well. So we might as well take all three as a group if we can.
Okay. So add that. On 10.3, you should have three. There should have been an additional overnight request. Okay, item 6.0, the first of our two public sessions. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to speak? Okay. On to item 7.0, committee reports. We have one committee report, Morse High School building project update, and then over to Patrick.
And just a brief update, July 26th, we had a building committee meeting in the district. And then on August 11th was the last meeting that we had just recently with the Department of Education. And we developed a kind of a task list of what needs to be done for the district in order to get to site approval. And our goal is that in the fall that we would have a straw poll vote on the site if everything goes as planned. So the meeting in July authorized the superintendent to make an option to purchase a piece of land. And we're still in the process of hoping to do that very shortly. And we hope to have a press release out again, hopefully by the end of this week, just letting the public know what piece of property that we're interested in and where we're at in the process.
Okay, are there any questions for Patrick on the status of the high school project? No one? Okay, I just want to make a couple of comments. I received a copy of those minutes from that building committee meeting. And I just want to make sure if we look back to our minutes from our last meeting, the board asked superintendent Manuel to put together a document that outlines the steps leading up to the acquisition of the land in timeframe. I'm assuming we can use this page two as that document?
Yeah, you can use that, but also that's the one that we sent out by email. That was a separate one from Ron Lamar as well. That had a tentative opening date of 2020 in the middle of the year. And then he had a tentative opening date of at the end of the year, 2020. So either one of those documents is fine. If you need, I can send out another one. But Ron provided that, I don't know, maybe three weeks ago, I think.
Okay. And do you feel that, I know you just alluded to it, based on what's transpired in August, do you feel that we're still on schedule for the straw poll in either October or November?
That's our goal. I think we're still on schedule. We're looking at a piece of property that has some nuances and, you know, some unique features to it. And so we have been working closely with our architects, with our attorneys, to try to make sure that we've done everything. We just talked about appraisals today, different ones that we might have to request. So just some details on this piece of property that are a little bit more complicated than some other properties. But I do feel like we've, you know, since we've had this option draft, we've been working pretty much every day on making sure that we're going to hopefully meet this deadline in the fall of the straw poll.
Okay, great. Anyone else? Okay, item 8.0, superintendent's report. Turn it back over to you.
Just some updates on the summer. Just the proficiency-based leadership committee for the district met two days last week and did a lot of planning for the system. Administrative retreat, Lou was here, I thank him, but he let us use his, I guess his home, not his real home, but his home for his business. And it was, I thought, a very productive day with our whole administrative team. We'll have another all-day administrative team meeting this Wednesday. New staff orientation is the 25th. And then, as you can tell from the calendar, the PD day is on the 30th and 31st. And then we start with students before Labor Day. We have, I believe, three, this changes a little bit, but I think we have three ed tech openings at this point right now. We have a part-time health physician at Woolwich, and we have a pre-K teacher at Woolwich. Those are the only openings that we have at this point. And yeah, I guess maybe four ed techs. So that's where we're at. And it's been an exciting summer to fill our positions with a lot of qualified people. And at this point, I asked Judy, I don't know that you got a hard copy, and I apologize for that, but I thought I missed out Judy. She works really hard on our staff to develop a professional development plan for the entire system for the whole year. And obviously, things can change, you know, and you have to roll with some punches as you go through the year if the training didn't go like you wanted or if you need to reinforce a concept. But I think it's something that is a good roadmap for us, for professionals, for the entire district.
Good evening. Yeah, I'm sorry you didn't get a hard copy. I've been away and it just slipped everybody's mind, I guess. But I'll go through the highlights. So on our first teacher day, all K to 12 teachers will be meeting here in Woolwich. And we will have training on the Marzano model, which is the basis for our teacher evaluation model. So that will be everybody K to 12. That's the first time we've done that. So it's going to be an experience. We have one trainer coming from Learning Sciences, which is the organization that Marzano contracts with to do the training. So this is a trainer that's worked with us before, and we know we like her, so we're hoping it'll go smoothly. We've also added a full day K to 8 ed tech training on supporting writing in the classroom. Because we've done so much with Lucy Cockens, and we're continuing that training this year, we felt like it was important to bring the ed techs in the loop. So we are having one of our Lucy Cockens trainers, Tracy Warren, is coming to do that work with the ed techs. 31st is a building-based day. We also have, we have Lucy Cockens training going on Cave 8 again this year. A little less K to 5 and a little more 6 to 8 because we just brought them in the loop last year. We're starting, excuse me, some elementary science work. With the science committee, we've hired a consultant to work with an elementary representative committee for science. We're doing some data training for administrators, and then we're going to bring some teachers in as well. We have three full days of that this year. The administrative team is finishing up their assessment literacy work, which we had two days last spring, we're going to have two days this fall. What else do we have here? Our full days are kind of a mishmash. We do have a day on November 8th, which was, we decided we should not bring, that's voting day, so not bring the students in, but we will be doing a training that day. And it's all going to be based on proficiency-based learning, but different for K to 5, 6 to 8, 9 to 12. Scoring writing, we have a May 19th. This is a different day for us actually from what it's been in the past. We usually have one in January. But we've moved it to May 19th because we thought that in addition to doing some PD work around writing and proficiency-based about high school, we could also do some transition things for the following year. So those are, those are pretty much the highlights. The data training for administrators is something that we have as a goal for the administrative team this year. So we were happy to be able to bring somebody in from the NWEA organization, and they're going to go over all the reports and, you know, how we can best use that information to inform instruction. That's it, questions?
Any questions for Judy? Jennifer?
Did you miss, did you say, is there work on report cards as well?
The report cards K to 5 are done. We finished that work over the summer. We reorganized it into trimesters from quarters. And so we had a committee that worked on that, and it's complete. We haven't started anything above fifth grade yet. I think we'll have to have that discussion about whether we go to trimesters above fifth grade, and then that'll, that'll prompt. We are doing a lot of, the proficiency-based work is, you know, it's all about the standards. So in some sense, we are doing report card work, we just haven't organized it the way that K to 5 group has.
Any other questions?
Steve, I just, it's a more, it's not really directed to Judy, but raised proficiency-based. I'm just curious, we put a lot of work into the, as far as staff development goes, the district from your reports is on target, I guess. I just wonder whether, how we feel, how, whether we feel the community is equally aware and has some understanding of what all this, what all this work means for their kids, for our kids, Judy?
No, this is a short answer. We really felt, we made a decision not to, we've been sending informational bits out, and we just actually finished a video that the high school people have talked about different aspects. That'll be going up on the website. We felt like we had to have a deeper, had to have a deeper understanding of it K to 12 before we really went out to the public. However, Patrick referenced our administrative retreat this week, and that is one of our goals. One of our goals is to have more of an informational session with the board so that you'll have a deeper understanding of it. And then also figure out how we're going to bring the community and the students, really, you know, up to speed. We still have, you know, it's 2021 when we have to graduate kids, but it's this current eighth grade class that'll be. So this is a pilot year at the high school, so there will be a lot more information coming to parents. Like at that parent night, Jay said he was, he was going to have some information.
I think this is a weak quote.
It's on the radar, for sure. Yeah.
Hello?
I just have my own question, I guess I'm what's the public for a while. So we, our district is trying to fully switch over to proficiency-based education, the teaching model, because from what I understand, the law that passes only that schools are required to be about proficiency-based diplomas. So are we doing, just aligning our teaching so that it goes along with diplomas? Or, because I know other districts, they've been keeping basically the teaching the same, just trying to tailor it a little bit to those content standards. But are we just fully doing the one through four?
Well, I think it's going to be a hybrid. I think it's going to be more, certainly more targeted to the standards than it is, has been. But we haven't made any decisions about what the grading's going to look like, whether it'll have a dual system, a single system, if it stays the same as it is now, or. So I think what we're trying to do is make it fit Morse High School. And I think a lot of the teachers feel that they're doing, particularly science, and, you know, they've been doing proficiency-based or standards-based. You can use those interchangeably actually.
Any other questions for you? Okay. Thank you.
Can I just ask you quick before we get off? Good news. Patrick, unfortunately Dave's not here. Could you, could you just touch on where we are in terms of our summer projects? The buildings, is everything on its get going?
Yeah, Benchmark and Dave and his crew have done a great job. Schools will look great, they're ready to go. We did a lot of painting this summer. We had a crew. We didn't have, I mean, because of the work that we've done with the band and now the ball in there, we didn't have, we didn't have a lot of big projects this summer. There's some things that were done at Fisher Mitchell noticeably. When you walk in, you'll see the office area is much bigger now. It will be less congested in the front entrance when you walk in. That was one project. Unfortunately, we had to do another project that had to do with, you know, the bathrooms at Fisher Mitchell, which was kind of unexpected, but, you know, something that we had to do at the very end of the school year. If you look at Fisher Mitchell, Dyke Newell, you know, the little bit of curb appeal that Dave's added to both with paint and also some signs, wall-up big signs at both those schools. So a little bit here and there. I don't have a list with me tonight, but Dave, I think, has felt like, hey, this is the calm before the storm with the Morse project, and kind of had a summer where he really felt like he got a lot accomplished, but no, no huge projects.
Any other questions on superintendent's report? All right, item 8.2, financial report. Deborah?
Hello, everybody's all nice and can, enjoying this beautiful weather. There are two reports in your packet. One, the end of June, that's un-audited, but it will give you a good idea of where we will end up when the audit's complete. We basically will have like 354,000 remaining in our expenses. Special ed tuition was in the negative, 163,000, and that's what we expected. Co and extracurricular is a negative amount, and so is school administration. And basically, those two cost centers are because of the distributing for salary and benefits based upon how we had budgeted for negotiations. So which are the good? 354,000, and we were short in tuition revenue, about 55,000. And the majority of that was in tuition. So overall, we're in pretty good shape. And of course, anything that we have left over will help as we move forward in the future years as far as budgeting. For July, it's just the beginning of the process, and what you see here expended is basically any July contract people for payroll and benefits and the beginning of purchasing supplies type of thing. And the revenue is just, we're just one month into that. So hiring is near the completion, and everything's looking pretty good with that.
Any questions for Deborah? Okay, thank you. All right, on to old business, and our first item of old business, item 9.1, review of 2015, 2016 board goals. At this point, we need to begin thinking about board goals for this year. And ideally, I would like to have a special meeting sometime between now and our next board meeting, just for the board to get together and focus on goals. I don't know what your schedules look like, or if you're open to that. But I wanted to throw that out there. Good with you, Steve? Anyone else? I just, I think it's beneficial for us, instead of trying to squeeze it into one of these meetings, just have our mind fresh and focus on that. I'm assuming afternoons better than daytime for everyone. All right, so.
I'll tell you what, what time, you prefer, 6:00 or 5:00, whatever time, seven, I don't know what should be yours. I'll try to, you know, try to write something down for you.
I'm good, thanks, but I'm working an hour away, so I can try to get a little bit of that actually.
I'm good with 6:00. You know, maybe spend an hour, hour and a half? Okay, so we'll look for a 6 o'clock meeting sometime in the next month. Did anyone want to touch on the old board goals before we move on?
I guess I would say that number four is pretty much.
The configuration.
Yeah, so that's something that we could think of what we wanted to put out or in that place. Did we have like topics before? We have, where our goal is trying to touch on specific topics, you know, when they're like kind of academic communication, not the academic. Well, I would say we omit number four by that place.
Okay. And you know, I mean, if there are things pressing in the district, there's no reason we can't eliminate all of these and start from scratch. Although I think some of these really need to be continued. Yeah. Okay, great. I'll, I'll afford to that meeting before September's meeting. We'll move on to 9.2, which is the second reading of policy J I C V, care of school property. Is there a motion on this policy? Move to approve by Bill.
Second.
Second by Steve. Any discussion on this one? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, that motion passes. Policy is approved. Okay, item 10.1, under personnel items. You can see on, on the table when you got here is an updated list of Schedule B positions. And Vina mentioned that the changes between this one and the one you received in your packet are highlighted in red, if you just want to take a look at that. Any questions for Patrick on these Schedule B positions?
These are positions which were currently approved, but they were not built and have been built.
That's my understanding, yes. Yep. And it looks like this year, unlike some years, most of these positions are full. We're not going to be tracking down somebody at the last minute. This is not an action item. Right? All right, any other questions on that? And we'll move on to nominations. This is an action item. Item 10.2A, we have a couple of nominations, just the one. Okay, and that was not in your packet, but it's on the desk, correct? Okay. Patrick, do you want to say anything about this position?
Yeah, we're very fortunate to be able to nominate Brandy Tainter to fill this position. It's, remember, we had a half-day a week at Pittsburgh, and through the budget process, we increased that to one day per week. And you can see Brandy is currently a registered nurse at Vulcan College. And I think she'll be able to balance this with, with that job as well. So we'll please define someone with her credentials. You can see, you know, we have one administrator, one staff member, had three applications, admitted all three, and she is our nomination to.
Any questions for Patrick on this position?
More just a comment, it's so wonderful to know that there's going to be somebody down there. It's just such an important thing for that community, those schools, those teachers, that family. And I'm very grateful for you to be able to.
Yeah, I agree. Anyone else? Okay, would anybody like to make a motion regarding the superintendent's recommendation? Bill makes the motion to approve. Second by Alan. Any other comments, discussion? All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, passes. Okay, item 10.3, this is for overnight field trip requests for students to participate in the flow program. You had two in your packet, there's another one on the desk here. I'm assuming we could make a motion to approve these all as, as one. Somebody like to make a motion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So it says the funding source on the first two is BMS. Is this funded from BMS, or was this a district-wide funding that we divided?
Do you know what we're taking for the transportation, do you know what we're taking?
For, for, will you take it out of the open right?
For BMS and also for, for split, for the lot.
Any other questions?
So I'm sorry, so that's just for the transportation or the cost and everything?
Yeah, this request here, just for transportation, sure.
Got you, thank you.
Any other questions on these? Would somebody like to make a motion? Bill is making a motion to approve all three requests for the flow trip overnight. Is there a second? Second by Alan. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand. Okay, unopposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, on to policies. We have two this evening. These are first readings. We begin with item 10.4A, policy J R A, student education records and information. Any questions, comments on this one? Okay. Move on to policy 10.4B, policy J I C A, student dress. Any comments, questions on this policy? I just had a question, why, just out of curiosity, why are we changing the policy from? from dress code to student dress? And my second, our second question is, was the staff consulted in the changes that were made to this policy? He couldn't maybe have administration at every building take a look at this?
Yeah, I mean, it's not, I mean, it's not about suggesting we consider that. It wasn't the back page. I mean, it looks like it cost them a lot, but it survived on the back page. You know, it's not, in theory, there's not a whole lot of change. It probably gives our administration a little more flexibility, or what's disrupted, or it's not, not about that, but it's, we can do that, bring it back to you.
Just they, they may have some insight, and I think, I think that there's, there's nothing in here that states what the consequences are, and I think that this, generally, this policy loosens what students can and can't wear, which I'm wondering if that puts more of a burden on administrators to make decisions or make judgment calls. At the same time, I don't know how much of a big deal it really is what students wear or what they choose to wear. No, any thoughts on that?
Well, I will say, I think at the high school, they're trying to crack down just a little bit, especially once you get, first get back to school and towards the end of school, I think is when they have the most problems. I don't think it's really, you hear some other school districts really have a big issue with that, and I don't think that really happens here. I will say, as a girl, I really like the changes that are made. And I think for the student body, it's something that I think you'll get a lot of positive feedback for. And I don't necessarily think that administration will have to make that many more judgment calls, because I think with a few of the other, well, the previous dress code, I think they would probably have to be just the same amount, and students would protest really no matter what they had to be, talk to about it. So in terms of the consequences, I know every situation is pretty much handled differently depending on the student and what resources are available to them within the school. So I think in general, it's been handled well. I think this, the change is probably just making it a little bit more comfortable for the student population.
Okay, thank you for your input on that. Any other comments, questions on this policy?
I'm just curious, how long do we have?
It's not, it's not super prevalent. I was asked, though, by administrator to see if we could make a dress code video just to remind students. I think they try to refrain from really publicly calling out students, so if it does happen, it's really only in pretty extreme cases where it is a pretty obvious issue, or it's really taking away from learning, but I don't think it's really that bad.
Any other comments on this one? Okay, so be prepared to vote on those two policies at the next meeting. Final public comment? Anyone? Okay, item 12.0, 12.1, we just need to set our next meeting date and location. Just remember that this time of year, we're rotating around the school, so our next board meeting is set for the 26th of September. Just check your calendars. At Pittsburgh. Okay, item 12.5, you now need to go into executive session to discuss the real estate issue. Someone willing to make a motion?
Ooh.
Moved to go into executive session by Alan? Second by Bill? All right, we are now in executive session. Okay.